Good evening. I'd like to call the regular, sorry, committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise to the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather together this evening to plan in the best interest of the children we serve, guide our decision-making, and help us to be worthy of the public's trust. We are grateful for our support in this community, and we are especially grateful for parents who partner with us in their child's education. We recognize, Father, the importance of a strong system of public education to a community's economic growth, and we ask that you guide us as we continue our efforts to provide excellence in education to our students. These things we ask in your name.
Mr. Campbell, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Votay.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Dreegan.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Ms. Lee Bowman.
Here.
Mrs. Lemoine.
Here.
Ms. Anglin.
Here.
Ms. Isar.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Votay. First item on the agenda is an education committee item. Mrs. White.
Thank you. Yes, to present tonight, we have Dr. Raviotta.
Well, good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to come before you tonight. As you're aware, as the governing body of our Head Start program, we are required to give you periodic updates as we progress through the year. I have a number of documents that I've given to you, and we're going to go through those. I'm not going to go through page by page, but I want to just go through some of the high points in each of them. None of the information that I'm giving you tonight requires board action other than the fact that we'll be presenting it to you. The first item, we like to review with you each year the governing body's roles and responsibilities. So if you take a look at handout 2A, you'll remember that each month you get in the mailouts to you a copy of our monthly financial report for Head Start, our enrollment report, our medical and dental report, and then the monthly menus. As we look at your roles and responsibilities, let me just mention that this is our 31st year in Heads to Heart. It's so amazing that we've been doing this for 31, and prior to that, I think we've been in the preschool business for a year or two before then. I think AG was our first preschool class. So we've been doing this for a long time. We're funded for 112 students, and of course, you all probably realize that last year, you know, was we did not have our full enrollment. We, I think we ended the year at 111, and so, you know, we were, it was a challenge to get kids to come to school last year, our preschoolers. And we can talk a little bit more about that later. In terms of your roles and responsibilities, the board has the legal and fiscal responsibility to guide and oversee the Head Start program. The main things that you all are doing are we're going to adhere to the hiring practices of the St. Bernard Parish School Board as set in the policy manual. The district provides services to Head Start in finance, maintenance, transportation, and food services. We receive information as needed from, you all receive information as needed from our current policy council rep from the board, and that's Ms. White, who's been serving on the policy council. And so you'll see the names of people that have been there before. Almost everybody's kind of taking their turn, so. And then we share governance with the policy council. Each Head Start program is required to have a parent policy council, and so we're in the process of forming that, and we'll be voting on this year's slate of officers at our November meeting next week. You all informally gather information from our programs as you are in the schools and get to go to some of the special events that we have. And then all financial operations are audited as part of the St. Bernard Parish School Board's system-wide audit. So, you know, we just, I know Mr. Fernandez and his department just went through the audit, and they'll be making a report. Head Start is part of that audit. If you take a look at handout 2B, Head Start mandates that we present to you and to the public a report published at least once each fiscal year that discloses this set of information from last year. So this is the 2020-21, 2021 annual report. In section A, you see the total amount of public and private funds received and the amount from each source. So the continuation application grant, we got $886,475 from the federal government, and in-kind contributions amounted to around $175,000. Section B, we give you the breakdown. I want you to notice the supplies. Last year, we received, in the neighborhood of $76,000 of COVID relief funding from the federal government, from Head Start. And, you know, COVID money has been coming into the districts across the nation, and so Head Start provided that for us. And of course, we use that for purchasing of Chromebooks, sanitation, all those things that went into many of the supplies that we've gotten over the course of last year. Section C just talks about the total number of children. I mentioned that we're funded for 112. The 123 there represents kids who come in and out. So if they've spent any time with us, we had a total of 123 kids pass through our doors. The most, section D is the results of the most recent review, and we're in full compliance. This year, we should be having an FA1 review, which is a conference call review of our program. And the next year, we should be returning to, we should have our in-person review. Section E talks about the percentage of kids, of our students, that have received medical and dental exams. And again, some of the students are in and out. If they, you know, come for a short period of time, they may not have gotten everything. We also do a breakdown of some of the following chronic health conditions for you there. Now, with regard to parent involvement activities last year, you know, we were in a COVID year, and so we kind of had to modify some of those activities. We had a number of virtual-type activities for our parents. We had phone visits. So we had to kind of temper some of the things that we did as we went through the course of last year. And then in section G, we just talked about the, you know, preparing kids for kindergarten. We had 16 of our children were, had IEPs and received services. As you look at section 2C, it's our program information report, the PIR. And last year, we didn't, I didn't present to you the PIR in the fall because we weren't required to do one from the prior year when COVID hit that March. So we didn't do a PIR. And this is a 19-page summary report. We're not going to go through all of it, but I just want to highlight what's in each section. And you can take some time if you want to go ahead and look at that. In section A is program information. It's our funded enrollment. The number of, we have seven classes designated as Head Start. The eligibility that goes into meeting those requirements of our students and their families. And I wanted to mention to you now because we did a change in placement of one of our Head Start classes for this year, even though this is the PIR from last year. We moved one of our Head Start classrooms from Joe Davies Elementary so that we now have two at Chelmsford Elementary. So we have one at Araby, two at Chelmsford Elementary, one at Miro, two at, I mean, one at Doche and two at Smith. I think that makes seven. So those are the, because none at Lacoste, none at Davies for this year, in terms of Head Start. And of course, you all know with our universal preschool, we have Head, we have preschool classrooms at every campus. But those designated Head Start are at those five sites. Section B talks about the program staff and qualifications. Section C, the child and health services, and that's where we pull some of that information for the annual report. And then section D talks about just some of the grant questions that they ask. In handout 2D, we're also asked to present to you the goals. And we did this at last, you know, usually I present to you in November, December timeframe, and then I'll report again back to you in the March timeframe as we talk about the application, the continuation application for next school year, for the next school year. So last March, I presented these goals to you, but we want to just make sure that you have a copy of our goals. We presented our original goals back in the, in March of 2020 because that was the start of the new five-year grant. And so we presented those back in March of 2020, and then it'll hold for five years. Each year, we're asked to monitor our goals, look at how we're doing, make adjustments. And of course, we make fine adjustments to what we're doing as we go through the course of the year. The goals that we have are not really altered very much. You know, what we're doing when we look at data, and we'll see that in the next section, is we're going to look at areas that we can try and beef up, move forward, improve instruction, look at what we're doing, and see how we can better service our students. So the continuation, the goals. Goal one, medical and dental care for our students. Goal two, a solid foundation in math. Goal three, a solid foundation in literacy and reading. Goal four, instruction by our, supporting our teachers. And goal five, working to increase parent participation. And goal six, to improve instruction in the classroom through our class observations. And then the last handout is section 2E. And so we use Teaching Strategies Goal as our assessment tool to look at the areas of social, emotional, physical, language, cognitive, literacy, and mathematics. Our teachers will assess our students three times during the year. Fall, you know, before the end of September usually, into October, the winter, before the end of February, and then the end of the year. And so we take that information. And what you see there, if you look at that, what we did was we, you're looking at the fall of this year. This first, I'm sorry. The first handout that you have there is the fall of this year, the 2020-2021 report completed. Wait, wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The second page is the, I'm sorry. In section 2E, you have the complete picture from last year. That's what I have, the complete picture from last year. That's the entire snapshot of all of last year. 2F is the fall results from this year. 2F is the fall results from this year. And so that's who we're looking at when you're looking at those two charts. Now, what I tried to do was to, what we tried to compare was the fall of this year with the fall of last year. So the fall of this year, when you look at the fall of this year compared to the fall of last year, it's not anything significant. In 2021, 26% of our kids were meeting or exceeding expectations in the fall compared to 18%. 63%. So we went up in three areas, social, emotional, physical, and language. We went down by one percentage point in cognitive, about three percentage points in literacy. And our math skills of our students coming into our programs is pretty low. And so that's what we look at as we look at the, at comparing 2020 to 2021. Now, when we look at the, from last year's report, that end of the year, 2021, I went back and looked at 2019 because that was the last full year we had. In 2020, we didn't do a end-of-year report. And in that, we went, well, comparing 2019 to 2021, we had a drop in four of the areas at the end of the year. And so, again, that's something that, you know, given all the circumstances last year, the kids who were in and out, quarantined, all those kinds of things, you know, I don't think anything was so significant that we made this drastic drop of 30 points. I don't think anything falls into that category. So as we look at it, you know, we understand that, you know, many of our kids had difficult experiences, and we're going to have to focus our efforts on trying to boost those areas where there's some deficiencies. And so that's been kind of the, how we looked at what we, you know, the data that we had to try and make sure that we're covering those things and able to try and boost those. I will say that, you know, we were short about, in the neighborhood of 140 pre-K students last year. Normally, we have around 500 is our normal pre-K enrollment for the past many, many years prior to the pandemic. And last year, we dropped to about 100, I'm sorry, 440, I'm sorry, 340, 360 range. And so we were about 140, 140 to 160 short of kids not coming to our schools in pre-K. Now, what does that mean for us? Well, that means that those kids who weren't in our schools were starting kindergarten and had to adjust to a school setting. Whereas in the past, you know, all, pretty much 95% of the kids who come to kindergarten have been with us in pre-K. And so it was a, it's been a little bit more significant number, and we're looking at how that's going to play out as we go forward with our kindergarten students this year with the numbers that weren't present in pre-K last year. So kind of, it's going to be a challenge. I think, I think our kindergarten teachers are already experiencing some of that where they had to spend a little more time getting kids adjusted to being on a school campus, being in a classroom. Whereas in years past, that's all been taken care of because of the universal preschool program that we have. So with that, that kind of concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board? Dr. Raviotta?
Thank you, Dr. Raviotta, for your report. We appreciate it. And do you, just one question. Do you attribute the drops and the expectations of meeting the expectations to the COVID? And the students not being in the classroom?
Yeah, I think, I think we've had, you know, we, with social distancing requirements in each, in each classroom, you know, our pre-K classrooms are highly interactive, highly engaging, and kids are interacting with each other and with materials and supplies. And we had to kind of temper that a little bit last year as we went through the year, trying to keep our pods together, trying to limit some of the materials, the manipulatives that they would normally deal with. We were kind of, had to adjust that a little bit, modify that a little bit. So I'm sure all those things. And then the kids in and out, I think, had an effect. So I, I mean, that's some of the early things that we saw. And again, like I said, it was a small drop. It wasn't a significant drop. But I think that's partly, you also are taking into consideration that, you know, one cohort might be a little different from the 2020 cohort, might be a little different academically or physically or whatever in, from the 2021 cohort. So I think some of that's attributed to that.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you for your report, and it's good to see the data year after year. And great job with Head Start and to all of our staff with the Head Start teachers. They're wonderful. And we're very blessed to have a Head Start program here in St. Bernard Parish as we have, as you said, over 30 years.
Yeah.
Preschool is important. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
I have a question. So the policy council is meeting in person again here, here in this building, or?
No, we met in, we met at Chelmsford Elementary last year.
Chelmsford Elementary.
Right. Because it was, we were in the big, the big meeting area on the second floor, the PD Center. And so we could spread out. So we did meet in person, but we, we were just, we met over the revenue.
And your parental involvement is?
Yeah, I mean, we work at that very hard. It's just, it's, that's a, that's a something that's just, you know, difficult. Parents have a lot of responsibilities, and we try and give them as many opportunities to participate as possible. So it's just, it's, it's always a challenge.
Thank you, Dr. Raviotta.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Okay, next item on the agenda, personnel changes for November 2021. And before you, you have a list. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. England?
Nice one. Ms. Votay, are we fully staffed? Because I know there's a shortage of teachers right now.
Well, we have a definite shortage of teachers. We also have teachers, and this is a good thing in terms of society, but many out on pregnancy leaves, some out on medical leave. So we're always looking for teachers that can do these short-term replacements for people that are going to be out, you know, anywhere from four to eight weeks or more, depending upon the situation. So we definitely could use more and more qualified people, as we've said each, you know, each board meeting.
What about some of the retirees?
Well, actually, with, when we talked about a little bit the project to achieve with the American Rescue Plan and the loss of learning that has happened because of the pandemic, we have the program in place where we're hiring a lot of interventionists and tutors, and we are pulling from the pool of retirees quite a bit for that, as well as, we're also pulling from the college students. In fact, we have many from Nunez Community College that are coming in and working with our students in terms of one-on-one interventions or tutoring either during the day or after school. So we're pulling from all sources of those who are already certified and degreed and retired and from those who are aspiring to move into the education field.
That's fantastic. You don't want to lose that experience out there. You need that.
Absolutely not.
Especially these days.
We will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on personnel changes? Okay, there being none. We'll go to the next item. Finance, Ms. Jackson.
All right. We have the revised 2021-2022 general fund and special revenue funds budgets. And we have Mr. Fernandez. Hi.
Hello. Okay, in your package, you have the revised, our first budget revision for 2021, 2022. Traditionally, in November, we come to the board with a technical revision of the budget where we go in and we add back in encumbrances at the end of the year. We reappropriate those amounts into the budget and add any fund balances for any grants that are out there. This year, in addition to that, we're also budgeting the salary increases that were given by the state and the board, the local portion of those salary increases as well. So that's what's reflected in this budget. There are four exhibits, as you see in the memo. One is a summary. Number one is a summary of what we're projecting for this year. Number two is a detail of the revenue change, the revenue budget and the changes to that budget. Number three is a summary, detailed summary of the expenditures for the general fund. And four is a listing of special revenue funds and their allocations as of right now, the approved allocations budgets. So in terms of the general fund, what we are, what we have done with revenues is we have gone in and increased the state MFP amounts to the actual initial allocation that we've had, which includes the state's portion of the salary increases. And we also increased sales tax receipts a little bit because looking at last year where we ended and the first two months of this year, we feel confident that we'll receive more sales taxes. So we increased that by $500,000. And that's basically spend of the revenue changes. The expenditures, as you can see, we have increases in salaries and benefits categories that relates to the pay raises that we previously mentioned. And also, we went in, and you'll see in materials, the supplies accounts and that, those are usually, those are the encumbrances that we're going in, back in, and reappropriating into the budget. So basically, although if you look at the summary, number one, it looks like our expenditures are exceeding our revenues, it's because we are reappropriating those encumbrances from year-end. If you pull those out, it's basically a balanced budget. So those year-end encumbrances were added into last year's ending fund balance, and now we're just reappropriating that amount. And exhibit four for special revenue funds are just the current special revenue funds that we have with their current approved allocations that we have approved budgets from the state for. And they're all listed there. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions? Number one?
No, Ms. Long.
Oh, Ms. Long, I'm sorry.
Quick question or comment. Mr. Fernandez, I notice we've got a pretty healthy fund balance.
Yes, sir.
Which is, which is good. I know at one time, we used to enjoy, enjoy like a 10% fund balance. Seems like it's a little more now, correct?
Well, the last several years, we've had higher. 10% is with the state. Between 7% and 10% is what the state considers the minimum fund balance for a healthy school district. When you get to rating agencies and that, the more healthier fund balance is, the better the outlook is for you. And we are looking at about 25% of our revenues in fund balance, which is a healthy fund balance. And we've always felt that it's good to have a healthy fund. One of the reasons after Hurricane Katrina that we were able to get up and running so quickly was because we had some monies in our fund balance where other districts didn't. And they had to wait. They were at the mercy of FEMA. So it is a positive thing to have a healthy fund balance.
Yeah, definitely. And you know, and we don't know what inflation and everything else that's going on right now, how expensive things might get
Correct.
in the future. So yes, it's good to have a good fund balance. I have one other question. Let's see. Under expenditures, salaries for ROTC, is that, how many people's involved with that?
Two. We have two ROTC instructors.
Okay. I think at one time, we only had one person, right?
Well, we had one person previously. Because we had a vacancy that we were attempting to fill, we were finally able to fill that vacancy. But normally, we had, at one time, we had three ROTC instructors years ago. But for the past several years, we had two positions in that ROTC program.
Okay, thank you. And you guys are doing a fantastic job.
Well, thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Dave, what is a Sprint Interactive Media revenue?
Sprint Interactive, the school district owns certain, what you would call it?
Microwave channels.
Microwave channels, which we lease to Sprint. And that's some monies that we generate in revenues from those channels every year.
Years ago, we were one of the very few school districts nationwide that were awarded, and this is way back when Henry Smith was with us, and I'm talking maybe 30, 35 years ago, that we own the rights to some of these microwave channels. And part of that bandwidth that we have the right to lease out, we have entered into an agreement with, there'd been some other, was it AT&T for a while and such?
Bell South.
Or this one, or Bell South, or this one, that one. And we derive some revenue from them taking a very small bandwidth for some of the things that they need. Now, that's about all I can tell you from a technological point of view of what that is. But we do retain those rights, and we keep thinking at some point, they're going to be very valuable. One day, they're not easily used, but we can lease out a piece of that to us. We, I was on the, by virtue of being the superintendent, I was on the National Board of what used to be NITV and then Source for Learning, that gave us a lot of advice with the FCC and how to handle those things. So, I would go up to Washington a couple of times a year and work through that with the attorneys who were involved in this. So, they give us advice with this. And in fact, we had some recent interest in some people who aren't agents wanting to buy those. So, we're maybe looking into that, I don't know.
Okay.
But maybe one day, it'll be really, really valuable.
Interesting.
I have another question on the, on the MFP. When, did they just, they like wire the funds into our account or something like that, or is it a?
Well, what they do is they take the total amount and divide it into 12 payments, which they,
Okay.
they do ACH transfer into our account every month, monthly.
Do they take out that, the unaccrued liability out of that?
No.
You have to take that?
Yes, that's paid through our insurance, that's paid through our retirement premium that's part of the retirement rate that we pay on salaries.
So, you get it, and then you, and then you have to?
Correct.
Actually.
Uh-oh.
Actually, you know, the MFP is a block grant, which it's a fight every year with the, not only at the bestie board, but at the legislature for a small percentage increase on a per pupil basis. And it's without getting into the intricacies of the formula. Years and years ago, you used to get the retirement payments separate from that, and it would, it would be paid on our behalf and flow through. But for the last 30 some odd years, it's been incorporated into the MFP. And the unaccrued liability, and here's my editorial comment, you know, was created by the legislature, not by school systems. When the teacher's retirement system was formed back, I think in the 1930s maybe, all of the employees at that time were just grandfathered into the system. And when they were grandfathered into the system with their years of experience, the legislature at that time did not properly fund the accrued liability down the road. So, if I was a teacher, say, and I had been 30 years in it, what should have happened is all of the people who would then begin to draw retirements year after year, that seed money should have been put in to make sure that that long-term liability was taken care of. Well, it wasn't. And then over the course of the years, legislators added people in. You know, they took in the cafeteria workers, or they took in the university systems, and they did the same thing. They took in the people, gave them the benefits, but did not at that time continue to put in for their past experience. So, this unfunded liability continued to accrue, continued to accrue, until when you read sometimes in the newspaper, and they talk about these, the huge unfunded liability of these retirement systems. Well, legislature created those way back. So, now, we had a constitutional amendment back in 1988, I think it was, where you had to develop a plan for paying off a portion of that. And it, the first portion of the unaccrued liability, the initial one, is supposed to be paid off very shortly in the next couple of years to, 30 years to do it. And then they're attacking the rest, so it should be coming down. That's the reason that we pay the very high matching portion in retirement, because if you look through the presentations from, say, the teacher's retirement system, the normal cost to do, to fund the current liability for the future of the people who are in it now is less than what you would pay in a social security. You know, in social security, you're paying, the employer pays 6.2%. Well, the normal cost for the teacher's retirement system is around only 3% or 4%, because it's healthy enough. That differential, that additional 19% or 20% or how much above that is to address this unfunded liability. In fact, it's over 20%, because what is, what is the rate now, David? 27, 28? 25.2. So, the normal cost, if we didn't have that unfunded liability, would only be maybe 4%, 5%. So, 20% of what we pay is to fund this that was created years and years by, in my opinion, the legislature. And those people who want to come in and change the retirement system from a defined benefit plan to a defined contribution plan and switch this up, we would still have that unaccrued liability to pay for those people who are currently in the system. So, we would still be paying those high rates for many years to come to address that unfunded liability. And we talk about a teacher shortage now. That's one of the benefits or the hiring points that when you talk with people about making a career in education here, it's, it's hard to talk to a 22-year-old about that because they can't see till when they get to retirement age. But those of us who have gone there and have gone along that journey realize how important that is, that when you do finally retire, maybe after 30 years or so in the profession, that you have that guaranteed defined benefit plan, where in many cases, in the, you know, in other sectors, you would not have it. So, the retirement system right now is very healthy. With the market conditions, the last year or so, it is the fully funded part that's fully, has significantly jumped up. So, I don't know if that really answered your question. It just gave me an opportunity to make that statement again out there.
No, it doesn't. And there was an interesting article in paper, a fourth of our MFP money, a fourth, what they send down to us goes towards our share of the unaccrued, and the school systems, and the debt that the legislature created for the school systems.
And the sad part about it is, as that employer rate shot up, the MFP didn't, didn't rise at the same percentage, at the same way. So, that's why it's eating more and more into that allocation, because they keep saying, well, you pay for it, it's funded through the MFP. Well, it's not funded entirely through the MFP, nowhere near. And as, but hopefully, that unfunded, the portion of the employer contribution for the unfunded liability is continuing to decrease slightly, but it is coming down. David, you were saying 25, it's been as high as 28, you know? And we're seeing some movement downward, and they're making progress with it. But it was not created by the school systems or any of these public systems. It was created by the structure that the legislature set up. And you know, when they go through that process and they're looking to do the budget, it's easy enough not to put in what they should have put in. They want to give people benefits, but when we talk about funding those particular things, to me, that responsibility was not met over the years. And this is, this is where we stand at.
They like to send us policy changes. We spend a lot of time with policy changes on this board for the past year. Maybe they need to change that policy on this particular issue and address it.
And, you know, and I'm not going to get into a charter school, traditional public school issue, except to say that traditional public schools are mandated. All of our people are part of the retirement system. Well, in a charter school, there's a choice by the charter manager or operator. They, they can enroll their employees in the teacher's retirement system, or they can choose not to. If they choose not to, they still get the same monies that are generated through the MFP as we would get if their school would be under us. But that gives them a very, much larger percentage that they can then do other things with. And their employees then do not have the coverage of a retirement system in that way. They may set something else up for them, but nothing that has a defined benefit that they can count on.
One more question, Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Foche.
No, no, I'm finished.
One more question for Mr. Fernandez before I make a motion. How much debt do we have on our, at our school system right now?
General obligation debt? Zero dollars and zero cents.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. And I'll make a motion.
Well, before you do that, I wanted to ask a question. There's a, the purchased professional services here, that's $150,000 difference on here. Do we cancel some professional service or something?
That is in people support services. That was, those purchased professional services was for speech therapy services. In the previous year, we were not fully staffed in speech therapists, so we had to contract outside services. In the meantime, we were able to hire smaller speech therapists, so we can reduce those contracted services out.
So, we hire them permanently, full staff?
Correct, they're full-time employees.
Because that's a huge difference, $150,000 difference on here.
Yes.
That's just.
We were able to, you notice that speech therapy, speech therapist salaries had increased and.
Like the line right above it? Increased $111,000. Anything else? That's it. Mr. Warner, did you?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the 2021-2022 General Fund, Special Revenue Funds Budget.
We have a second. Any other questions, any discussion? Ms. White?
Oh, no, you said you'd do it.
Oh, Shelton.
Oh, did he? Okay.
Uh-huh. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Person carries, thank you. Next item, Executive Committee, Ms. England.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Tysor. This is plot point one, resolution to employ Hammond, Sills, Atkins, Geis, Noah, and Perkins LLP as special counsel. Ms. Foche, can you lead us with this?
Okay. As we all know, our primary counsel, primary counsel for the school system is our local district attorney. And when we have, when we need initial legal advice, that's who we go to. There are times when we need special counsel where, because the district attorney cannot necessarily handle cases for us long-term. And we do that in our workers' comp situation. For example, we have special counsel for workers' comp. We'll have special counsel, for example, with liability, general or professional liability for accidents, you know, through the insurance company for that health insurance part. Well, we also have special counsel on many of the school-related issues having to do with everything from employees to special education services, a myriad of services specific to education law. Hammond and Sills is, as you all well know over the years, is the premier accounting firm in the state of Louisiana that are the experts in educational law. And they have offices all throughout Louisiana. We primarily deal with Bob Hammond's over the years, who is a senior partner for that particular firm. So, as you can see from the letter, in 2012, we had passed a resolution re-upping or employing them as our special counsel at rates ranging from $100 to $175 an hour, which was the Attorney General's scale at that time. The, that scale has increased over the years, and we have never gone back with them to do an additional resolution or to bring them to the Attorney General's scale. Whenever we employ the special counsels, especially in those other areas like workers' comp, liability and such, it's the common practice that they represent according to the Attorney General's scale that he sets up for all legal services in the state for the public bodies. And that scale ranges from $125 to $225 per hour, depending upon the years of experience of the attorney. So, what we're asking tonight is to pass the resolution to, for Hammond, Sills, I always say Hammond and Sills, because when we first started with them, it was two managing partners. But they're now Hammond, Sills, Atkins, Geis, Noah, and Perkins, to be the special counsel for us in the field of the education law and to pay them according to the scale set up by the Attorney General in the state of Louisiana.
Yes, I was impressed by Hammond and his crew, especially when we went to LSBA, to the conventions and everything, and just their knowledge. Me personally, I can't, I wouldn't look any other place. And they go by the state law, you know, for the increase. So, I'll be in favor of that. Any questions for any board members?
I have a question. Yeah, Mr. How long have we had a relationship with them? I mean, I know this goes back to 2012. Does it, does it go further back?
Oh, absolutely. I moved into the central office in 1988. And we were dealing with Bob Hammond's and all at that particular time. I think, if I can remember that far back. But it's, he is the go-to person in his firm, like I said, for education law in the state of Louisiana.
I see his, the last resolution we did was on June 19th, 2012. It'd be nice if we can get almost another 10 years at that same rate.
At the same rate.
Everything's going up, Mr. Warner.
And to put it in perspective, all of our legal services, if you look at our budget, we do not, we might spend maybe at the most $20,000 a year with all outside counsel. We very seldom, and whereas we're not on a way, in a situation where we, you know, have to do this. But these days, it's kind of increasing a little bit with the society that we live in. But they would handle all portions of the education law. And I think where we do the most interaction with them has to do with laws surrounding special education.
Right.
Yeah.
Ms. Tysor, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Is that it?
I am, yeah. Thank you, Ms. England.
Ms. Tysor.
Thank you, Mr. England. And Ms. Foche, they actually were the counsel for the Louisiana School Boards Association for many, many years. Are they still?
I think so. Bob, you know, Bob is the senior member. I think when you go, you hear a lot too from John Geis, who is one of the partners as well, but they still interact. Now, you know, the School Board Association has an attorney that they may deal with on a day-by-day basis as well. But this firm still does all the presentations at LSBA and are at the Capitol all the time when legislation is passed. So, they're familiar with all the current legislation. They produce, they do a lot of training. We've been through training here as a board with members of their firm from the legal aspect as well, so, yes, thank you.
That's it, Ms. Tysor?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Long?
Just like to say that, yeah, I think Bob Hammond and his group are well worth every penny. They've always, they've always been someone we can depend on. And in fact, if I remember correctly, sometimes he did work for us to, he didn't even charge us, if I remember correctly.
Then call him at any time.
That's right, that's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Long. I know in the past, I know Ms. Foche, just pick up the phone and they're on the phone. You know, you don't get a say, hey, wait, I'll call you back in a couple of weeks. No, Bob Hammond, and then they pick up the phone, right away. Any other questions? Need a motion? Okay, motion, second by Mr. Long. And we'll read this resolution at the meeting next week. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So move.
Thank you, Mr. England. Next item, or the superintendent's evaluation. In your folder, you have the superintendent's evaluation. And please, if you would, turn it in by November 16. And please, if you would, turn it in by November 16th, and then we will review the, that outcome at the regular meeting. No, at the committee meeting.
Actually, yeah, usually we schedule a special meeting right before the committee meeting. On December, the first meeting in December, whatever date that is. Thank you. Did you have something?
No, that's fine.
All right. Ms. Boche, superintendent's recommendations?
Just a few things. Tomorrow, I know Veterans Day is on Thursday, but tomorrow, the parish is having the Veterans Day parade. It'll be tomorrow afternoon, rather than, they used to have them on Sunday mornings, but they changed it this year. It's been a little challenging for us because trying to get kids to help march in the parade when we are also dismissing students and trying to bus them home and such. But the, so they pushed the parade back. I think it starts at 4:30. Our elementary schools will be marching in the parade. We have St. Bernard Middle is a middle school that's going to be marching. Usually, our younger kids are in it. So, anyone out there tomorrow afternoon, it's a very short parade route, starts around Hickory and just ends right there at the parish government complex. And then there's a little, a nice little social, I guess, if you want to call it, out there in Torres Park afterward. So, we'll be participating in that tomorrow afternoon. And we'd like to also give a shout out to ShellMed High's football team and Jason Tucker as the coach. They, you know, they won the district championship Friday night. They're undefeated in the district. And it just happened to coincide, the win Friday night plays Jason Tucker, our coach, as the winningest coach for ShellMed. He passed up the record set by Bobby Nuss many decades ago. And it was an exciting evening, and also happened to be homecoming. So, I was at the game, and there was a lot of excitement, and I think the kids, kids were so excited, they won the game, and immediately, the school had shirts with district championship on them. So, out on the field, they'd pull their jerseys off, put their championship shirts on. So, it was a nice big celebration. And this Friday night at 7:00, 7 o'clock at night, will be the first playoff game, and it will be a home game at ShellMed, 7 o'clock Friday night in the football playoffs. So, they're all excited. They're playing Horton from, they're coming way down. You know, usually, we're traveling up to West Monroe and playing well. This time, we got a home game because of the seating. So, a team from North Louisiana is traveling down to play us in the first round Friday night. So, they're excited. We'll go all set.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, there being no more discussion. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No weak adjournment.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Campbell, second by Mr. Egan. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.
Good night.